...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That was very good. Hearing of visitors, do we have any visitors that wish to be heard? Jessica.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jessica Kinsman. I'm the president of the Abington Education Association, and I'm here tonight with over forty people in our association. We're here in support of our negotiating team. The Abington Education Association has been the professional voice for our members for well over fifty years, and we're also the professional voice on behalf of the children of Abington. And we're here tonight to ask you for a fair and quick settlement to our expired contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Shannon. I'm the vice president of the Abington Education Association. I've had the privilege of teaching in almost every building in the school for the last twenty-three years, and I would also like to encourage you for a fair and quick settlement to our contract. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, I'm Ian Beaton. I teach at the Frellel. I have taught there for over thirty years, and I'm asking for a quick settlement, please.
Good evening. My name is Denise Boyd. I teach at the Frellel School. I've been there thirty years, and I'm also here in support of the contract negotiating team.
Hi, I'm Karen Henderson, and I'm the old woman here. I've been teaching at Abington for thirty-nine years straight, and I love it, and I'm not retiring anytime soon, and I'm here tonight as a member of the negotiating committee and as a member of the AEA to please try to settle a contract quickly and fairly.
Good evening, folks. I'm Robyn Gilpatrick. I'm a grade-six teacher at the Woodsdale School, and I'm here with my colleagues to advocate for education in Abington, and I hope to see a fair and quick settlement to our contract issue soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Hoyt, and I'm a teacher at the Center School. I've been teaching kindergarten for eleven years, and I've been in Abington for thirteen, and I'm here to ask for a settlement of our contract, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Elizabeth Goncalves. I'm the department chair of English at Abington High School. I've been in Abington for sixteen years now, and on behalf of our negotiating team, I would like to show them support, and I would also like to ask for a fair and quick resolution to our contract. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ariel Ann Conley, and I am a school nurse here in Abington and have been so for the past seventeen years, so know all of your children well, and I would like to reiterate what my colleagues have said in support of the negotiating team, the Abington Education Association, in seeking a quick and fair settlement of our contract. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eileen Kellerher. I'm a science teacher at Abington High School. I've been there for about six or seven years, six and a half, I suppose, and I'm here with my colleagues to support the negotiating team and to ask for a quick and fair settlement. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrea Clifford, and I'm an advocate for education. I am an English teacher at Abington High School, and I've been teaching for almost fourteen years, and I am here to ask for a fair and quick settlement for the contract. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Meg Doherty. I'm the math department chair, grade seven through twelve, and I've been working in Abington for twenty years, and I'm asking for a quick and fair settlement for the contract.
Hi, I'm Joyce Harrington. I've been working in Abington for twenty-six years. I'm the director of music, and I'm here to support the negotiating team in asking for a quick and fair settlement to our contract.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Capone. I'm a teacher at the Frellel Middle School. I've been there for about six years. As a math teacher, I am also here to support our negotiating team.
Hi, I'm Sandy DeSino, and I am here to support our negotiating team. I'm a teacher, a science teacher at the Frellel School, and I've been here for about fourteen years.
Hello, Tim Hill, Frellel. I've been here for about eighteen years, and I'm here to support the dean for a quick and fair settlement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Reading and approval of records. Need a motion to approve the minutes of February 3rd, 2012, as presented.
The, um, there's another copy that hopefully everybody was given that is reflective of just that the attendance of people at that meeting had, the previous copy in your packet had Tim Hatfield listed as attending that meeting. He wasn't there. That was a different meeting, so you should have an amended copy reflective of that change. He wasn't there the February 3rd meeting.
So as amended?
Yes.
Motion by?
Make a motion.
Second by Ellen. All in favor? Pours? Motion to approve the executive session minutes of February 3rd, 2012, as presented or amended. Motion by Jeanette. Second by Trish. All those in favor? And, thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of January 31st, 2012, as presented. Motion by Ellen. Second by Trish. All those in favor? And, thank you. We're going to bring up Matt McCurden and his group from the Woodsdale right now. Good evening. I'd like to present to you four of our students who are here to talk to you about the CARE Center, and they've written their own introductions and have a lot to share with you today. We also have a trifold bin, or if you don't mind.
Good evening. My name is Morgan McNeilberry, and I'm here with my classmates from Woodsdale School, Catherine Parks, Sean Bartlett, and Dylan Gately. We are here to represent Woodsdale School Student Organization CARE Center. Before we explain what we are all about, we would like to thank the school committee and Mr. Peter Schaefer for inviting us. CARE Center is made up of twenty-four students from grades five and six. We meet twice a month after school under the direction of our advisors, Ms. Kristen Grady and Ms. Christine Sullivan. Catherine Parks is our student chairperson and runs the meetings following our elementary procedure.
The purpose of CARE Center is for students to plan, organize, and implement projects designed to develop community relationships. We are learning the importance of becoming caretakers within our school and the community in which we live. All of our projects benefit others. This year, we have sponsored a food drive to help support the St. Vincent Deposit Society, participated in Coats for Kids Drive, made ninety-nine Valentine placemats for residents at Colony House Nursing and Rehab Center, and celebrated a school-wide National Wear wear for Women's Day. Because of the support of students and staff, Woodsdale was able to donate $225 to the American Heart Association. Our most recent project was a huge success. We had a Support Our Troops drive and sent eighteen boxes to our military men and women serving in Afghanistan. We publicly would like to thank everyone who brought in well over one thousand items, and in particular, the HUG Foundation, which paid $242.10 for postage.
Our next project, which is about the most popular, begins this week. CARE Center makes blankets for the babies in the neonatal intensive care unit at South Shore Hospital. We actually deliver the blankets and are usually greeted by the doctors and nurses who care for the babies. It is an awesome experience. Future plans include providing gift bags for children in the pediatric unit at South Shore Hospital, participating in a family and friends CPR training, and planning Spirit Days in line with Woodsdale School Improvement Plan. Our goal is to organize a patriotic program to mark Memorial Day and finish up the year by planting flowers at the front entrance of our school.
There are a few people we would like to thank, our principal, Mr. McCurton, for supporting all of our projects, and especially Kristy Coombs and the Jeff Coombs Foundation for continuing to fund CARE Center, allowing us the opportunity to look beyond our own needs and to develop community awareness and a sense of citizenship. Thank you.
Any questions coming?
I, I just, I can only imagine that men and women serving overseas, it's even more meaningful getting something from, from a school and from, from a grade school, you know, and that's significant. So that along with all of the other good work that you're doing means quite a bit, not only to those people that benefit from the work, but also the students at the school that see you modeling that behavior about how you care, about your community, is a great example, and I'm sure builds the culture of the entire school community. So, and I thank the advisors for their time, and, because I know that you have to go above and beyond to, to do those, to work on those projects with students, so thank you also.
Thank you. Okay. Unfinished business. Reconsideration of January 3rd, 2012 minutes.
In your packet, what you have is the minutes that were voted at our previous meeting from January 3rd with just an attention to detail here to make sure that the minutes are reflective of the discussions that took place at our meeting. And the only difference from what you voted in this set of minutes is that on page seven, it indicates that a discussion took place about the MSBA feasibility process, and on page nine, it says that there was no presentation around the MSBA feasibility study because it basically took place during the discussion, refers it back to page seven. So those are the only changes from what you previously approved. So I'd ask for reconsider, you know, take any questions people have, but then ask for reconsideration of those minutes.
Questions? Okay. Need a motion to approve the amended minutes of January 3rd, 2012, as presented? Motion by Trish. Second by Ellen. All those in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Abington Public Schools Strategic Plan. Want to say anything about that?
Yep. I, if, we have a number of, thank you, a number of items that are under unfinished business for your consideration. At the last meeting, we talked about some time to, for deliberation, consideration for a number of these items. This is, this is one of them. This is our vision, our mission, and our guiding principles of our strategic plan. And just a couple of things. I don't, I don't need to go in great detail through this because we talked about it the last time, but I would be remiss if I didn't again thank the members of that strategic planning committee and then, and then just highlight a couple of things. So I'd like to thank Mr. Jim West of our school committee, Debra Thomas, Felicia Michella, Erin Hyer, Jason Lynn, Terry Sullivan, Roseanne Karpaska, Amy Scolaro, Matthew McCurton, Nicole Rich, Jessica Kinsman, Andrew Burbine, Anne Beaton, Colleen Blanchard, Lori Corner, Andrea Doyle, Suzanne Furness, Beth Golden, Elizabeth Goncalves, Joe Lavelle, Caroline McDermott, Pat Narkata, Michael Nickley, Mariana Porcella, Steve Wakelin, Eileen Walls, and Leanne Zarkoskus for the work on our strategic planning committee. Just to review, the strategic plan for any organization provides guidance, provides measurement of goals, provides direction, provides guidelines for the decisions that we make in it, and it gives us our mission statement, and then a vision for what we want the schools to be at the end of the strategic plan. The mission statement that we discussed that, that this group agreed on, and I presented to you before, is something I'd like to just review again, because if an organization's going to be successful, then it uses its mission, mission statement, and I, as a superintendent of schools, take every opportunity I can to highlight what the mission is, to talk about the vision, and talk about the guiding principles. Otherwise, this plan sits on a shelf, and it doesn't mean anything. It only means something if, it's something that we use and we discuss. So the mission statement that was agreed upon was the mission of the Abington Public Schools is to provide all students with relevant, challenging educational experiences to prepare them to be engaged, responsible citizens, and members of a global community. The guiding beliefs that this group crafted, and we've talked about, are the following. We believe in making decisions in the best interest of students. We believe in supporting all students in achieving success, in fostering the physical, intellectual, technological, social, emotional, and artistic development of our students. We believe in creating a safe, tolerant, supportive, organized, and equitable learning environment. We believe in providing challenging educational experiences that build character. We believe in developing self-discipline and personal responsibility, promoting creativity, problem-solving, effective communication, and critical thinking skills, cultivating the educational partnership among home, school, and the community. We believe in nurturing a culture of collaboration, collegialogy, collegiality, and mutual respect. We believe in encouraging staff initiative and innovation, implementing professional development that is essential for effective instruction and improved student learning. We believe in reviewing and updating curriculum, instruction, and assessment in a regular cycle, recognizing that effective and appropriate technology is essential for teaching and learning. We believe in inspiring all students to become lifelong learners. There was some discussion in our last meeting of adding to this, and one of the discussions that followed about adding to this is that these are, these are broad-reaching, overarching guiding beliefs, and that there's a great deal that's inherent to these guiding beliefs in terms of our philosophies and what we want for children, and that there are other action plans that follow that support these, this mission statement, the vision statement, and the guiding beliefs, the specifics of how we achieve these. And those other elements will be implemented, incorporated, discussed. Other thoughts will go into those action plans, and that's also really where the rubber meets the road in terms of what takes place at our schools to ensure that, again, the vision and the mission are accomplished. And so that is presented to you as, as it stands, along with the vision statement that includes the following. The Abington Public Schools District, in partnership with families in the community, is a model school system that provides opportunities for all students to think critically and creatively, communicate effectively, and act responsibly to achieve their highest potential in academics, arts, and athletics. We are dedicated to providing state-of-the-art resources for teaching and learning, technology, and facilities in an environment that is safe, supportive, enabling students, and enabling students to become lifelong learners. Our students are prepared to face the challenges of the future in an ever-changing world. And so, be willing to answer any questions people have, and I'd also be asking for the recommended action for a motion to approve the strategic plan as presented.
Any questions?
After the discussions, after the last meeting, was anything added or changed within the context of it?
No.
Not, so it was as we first discussed?
Those thoughts and ideas will be discussed in the action plans and represented there through the discussions with, with those committees. This is as it stands from the last meeting.
Any other questions? So we need a motion to approve the Abington Public Schools Strategic Plan as presented. Motion by Jeanette. Second by Ellen. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Facilities Goal Action Plan.
Not going to cover this in a great deal, with a great bit of detail, other than to hit some, the strategic, just to talk about the strategic goal and, and the objectives, because, again, in our last meeting, this was, I'm sorry, two meetings ago, this was presented and discussed, and people have had a ti, had some time to think about it. But this is really about providing state-of-the-art facilities for our students in the learning environments that we need in the Abington Public Schools to, to get the job done today. You know, coming up in the agenda, we're going to talk about school construction renovation. We've talked about that quite a bit, and, you know, I've always said, I'd rather be, I'd rather be rich in staff when people drive away from the buildings, knowing that their children are well taken care of than rich in buildings. And I think we're rich with people that take care of children, and I also think it's time we take care of our buildings. And the state's providing funding for this. It's, it's Abington's turn, and this will be a benefit to the entire community. There'll be more about that, but this facility action plan really gets to improving our teaching and learning spaces for our system. So, there's a strategic objective in here that, that includes securing the necessary votes to support the renovation, expansion, and construction of our school facilities, present and submit required Massachusetts School Building Authority applications, and have them accepted and funded by the MSBA, and that, and that includes, that means getting local approval for our taxpayers to support building projects in Abington, and begin work on MSBA and town-funded projects as soon as possible, and continue to avail ourselves of alternative funding sources for maintenance upgrade, for the maintenance and upgrade of our school facilities. For example, the Woodsdale windows, that was, I think you know, and Felicia's talked about that quite a bit, that was originally a 1.5 million project, came in in the end at 1.1 million dollars, so it saved $400,000 compared to what it would have cost originally in a time when construction was more expensive, and on top of that, the state paid for better than 50% of that project, and if someone walked up to you in your home and said, "I'll pay for most of the cost of renovating or replacing your windows in your home," it's a no-brainer you would do it. And in terms of school buildings and facilities here in Abington, obviously, that's something that we want to continue to do. So, I'm ready to answer any questions people have about the Facility Action Plan, and we'll be looking for the recommended action, a motion to approve that, where people are ready to consider it.
Any questions? Okay. We need a motion to approve the Facilities Goal Action Plan as presented. Motion by Jeanette. Second by Ellen. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Technology Goal Action Plan.
The next item I have under unfinished business is the Technology Action Plan. We spent quite a bit of time at the last meeting with Erin Hyer, the director of Technology Services, who explained this, and not only this, we went into a number of, I think, great discussions about what's going on with technology in Abington and what we're trying to do to enhance the teaching and learning environment. This strategic action plan includes the strategic goal to maximize opportunities provided by technology to transform teaching and learning. It includes the strategic goal to maximize opportunities provided, sorry. I'll catch it. Provide all, a strategic objective to provide all staff and students access to current hardware and software, achieving one-to-one computing ratio, and then the action steps to achieve that. Develop and implement a technology literacy curriculum for all students. Maximize the opportunities provided by technology to transform teaching and learning. Implement appropriate professional development in instructional technology. Add appropriate instructional technology support. Commit to a regular plan to evaluate, consider, and acquire emergent technology. And then, again, there is a specific action step for each of those strategic objectives. Because we spent quite a bit of time on this at the last meeting, we held on approving this for the, the overarching statements to be ready for consideration or to be approved. I'll answer any questions that I can. I may have to defer to Erin for some of the more complicated questions, but my recommended action would be to ask for a motion to approve the Technology Action Goal as presented.
Any questions? Need a motion to approve the Technology Goal Action Plan as presented. Motion by Trish. Second by Ellen. All those in favor? Thank you. Annual Town Meeting One Article.
This is another item that we spent some, some time on, some good time on, because the more we talk about it, the more people understand it, and I truly believe the more people understand what we need to do in Abington for school construction, the better we'll be, the more educated the voters will be, and I believe the better supported we will be in, in improving our teaching and learning spaces, and I also think the life of the community. This is something that Abington desperately needs. The, the language that you have in your agenda is the language that will be used, preferred by MSBA for the town meeting vote. What was just passed out to you is the language that's gone through a number of checks. It's been checked by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's been checked by our bond council, which in turns, which, which is basically for the legalities of it, the language to make sure it matches chapter and verse in Massachusetts, and appropriate. It's been checked by the treasurer's office, the board of selectmen's office, and the change here from what you've seen in the past is that it doesn't include a dollar amount. The dollar amount is, will be, of $800,000, will be included in the language of town meeting. The other thing here that could throw people off, which, which I appreciate that Trish called me about, but that also we talked about here at the town hall, answered some questions for the board of selectmen last night, is that this language specifically states that it's a feasibility study for the Abington Public Schools for the Frellel Middle School. That's how we enter into this, using the name and the address of the Frellel Middle School as the starting point for feasibility. That does not mean at the end of this, we're building a middle school. This means that we have an issue that we need to solve. We go in with a problem. We've talked about the problem in Abington is really K through eight in terms of appropriate teaching space, and in order to solve the K through eight problem, you can absolutely emerge with a high school, with a middle high school, and we can use perhaps the existing infrastructure, the other school buildings, in a way that is, improves teaching and learning space for the town, for our students, for our teachers. And so, there are no guarantees of how you leave feasibility. You go in with a problem, and you look for the most efficient and solution, the most programmatically appropriate solution, and the most effective solution to meet your needs of your town. Certainly willing to answer any questions people have. I can tell you that last night, the board of selectmen did vote unanimously to support a debt exclusion question in the general election that takes place in April for the funding of this article, and that's, that's, that's good news. That means Abington residents will get an opportunity to vote this up or down in April. If they hadn't have, that may have seemed out of order to people, that they've already voted to make it a debt exclusion question. The reason that they did that is because, because of the timing that's required to create a ballot question, if they didn't do that, we would end up with a special election that would have cost six or $7,000. But by making that decision last night, in a way that people may feel is early or out of order, they've saved the town having the expense of a separate election, and it'll be a part of the general election in April, so that's, that's good news. Ready to answer any questions people have?
I have a question, but I have a couple of comments I just wanted to make. That was a good, because I was going to say some of the things that you said, just so that the public understands that this was presented- that the public understands that this was presented to us by the MSBA. It's an opportunity for us to work with them. I'm not going to speak for everybody. I'm going to vote to, to approve this and send it to town meeting, because I think it's important for the, it's a huge opportunity, too big for one board to make a decision. I think that voters in Abington, town meeting, and then ultimately, as you said, with the debt exclusion, need to make that decision. But as a committee, I think that we're obligated to answer any and all questions that the community's going to come up with, because there's probably going to be a lot of them, and factual. And I, I think the important thing to stress is that we don't know what the project is going to be. And the one thing that worries me is that I don't want people going in to vote thinking, "It's going to be a high school, it's going to be," because we don't know what it's going to be. It's just going to open the door for us to start that discussion. And I wouldn't want to influence anybody's vote as far as what amenities a project might have, because we simply don't know what the project is going to come out to be. But it, like I said, it's up to the voters, and I think that if they have the facts in front of them, and we can, I really want to encourage everybody to call us. We have email addresses on the website, because we'll answer any questions that, I mean, I think the committee will be in agreement on that. That would be important. But other than that, I'm all set. I don't have any questions.
Anybody else? Would you like me to read this? If you're ready to consider it, absolutely. Okay. Need a motion on the feasibility study for the Abington Public Schools to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the Abington School Building Committee for a feasibility study at the Frolio Middle School. 1071 Washington Street, Abington, for which the feasibility study, the town may be eligible for, for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any costs the town incurs in connection with the feasibility study in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. Need a motion to approve the article? Motion by Jeanette.
Second.
Second by Ellen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Proposed 2012-13 school calendar with professional development days. Not looking for a, the action on this tonight. Wanted to give the committee enough time to consider it. At the last meeting, we gave you a proposed calendar for the next school year that included vacation days and days of operation. This one adds professional development days, and Dr. Thomas was going to spend a moment talking about those days and how those days would play out in terms of what people would be doing, and talking about the addition of a day in January.
Right. As you're aware, every year, I present the focus for the following year in terms of service days and professional development days. Three years ago, we did ask for the consideration of an additional day, and we were granted the one additional half-day, I should say. And this year, it's becoming even more of a need, because, and you've heard me speak to it, and I'll speak to it again this evening, is with the amount of state mandates that are coming in terms of the Common Core, and in terms of the park assessment, and with the whole new teacher supervision evaluation of teachers and administrators and everyone.
The park assessment's the new MCAS.
Right. Thank you. Sorry, I'm really bad. I always use acronyms. That's our world. So, the MCAS will be changed into a park assessment, which is a partnership of assessment with college and career readiness that I'm going to chat with you a little bit about later. But in terms of all of this, it's, we're always in the race for time. We just never have enough time. And we have teachers and administrators that work endlessly on these topics, but we're really at a point where we're at capacity. There's just not enough time to do it. So, we're asking for, this is one area that we're requesting. If you really look at the calendar, you'll see that every month, we have, with the exception of June, we have an in-service. Primarily, most of them are half-days, with the exception of the November full day. And so, we are requesting for January, that we ask for January 18th, which would be another half-day in-service day that the committee would consider, and will ask for that to be decided upon at the next meeting. So, any questions in terms of that? Okay, thank you.
Continue on. Yep. The Board of Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Shaver.
Under personal administration, I've approved the appointment of Ms. Sarah Bowman as the Director of the 2012 pre-K through eight academic summer school program. Approved the appointment of Ms. Amy Lewis as the Director of the 2012 secondary academic summer school program. Approved the appointment of Ms. Lisa Matthews as a point eight special education teacher. Approved the appointment of Mr. David Crane as a volunteer coach for Alfred Crisby. And that's all I have under personal administration.
Other matters, Community Support Goal Action Plan.
This is the first presentation to the committee for the Community Support Action Plan. In your packet, you have a copy. I, I'm going to come back at the next meeting, and I'm going to ask for approval. But just wanted to introduce it to you this evening. The first strategic goal is to generate strong community support for the school district. One of the things that was loud and clear in our strategic planning was the need to talk about all of the good things that occur inside all of our school walls, all of the things that people are doing for the community, so that people understand all of the good work that's done. So, the strategic objective is to create and implement a plan to effectively communicate the message of the Avenue of Public Schools with the constituent groups in the community. Specific action steps include information about the Avenue of Public Schools' achievements and events are broadly communicated. Achievements and the indicator of accomplishment would be indicators and events are broadly communicated and published through a variety of sources, such as, I'm not going to list all of them, but what it really does is update this plan to include the more state-of-the-art means to communicate. Press releases, but including also blogs, local cable, YouTube, and video links, social networking, and electronic sign boards, just to mention a couple. Meet with very, another action step, meet with various groups to highlight accomplishments and communicate mission, vision, and challenges. And the indicator of accomplishment is that very group, various groups are met with to highlight accomplishments and communicate our mission, vision, and challenges, such as parents, senior citizens, realtors, business owners. This is not, and, this is not limited to this list. These are examples. Community organizations, our faith community, really reach out to the community at large. Develop a process for writing press releases, which is more streamlined and efficient. A standard press release form will be created. Request PTO press liaisons at each building, and then a list of press contacts are generated, just making it easier for people to disseminate information. Next action step, disseminate school-related information at school-sponsored events. Strategies are employed, such as PTO booths, tables at, at events. Informational flyers are developed. Public access announcements are made. Videos of graduates are published. Art, music, and sports events are published. We are ramping up our local educational channel. We want to include more and more of the work that goes on in our schools on that educational channel. Collaborate with representative parent leaders to communicate school-related information to the community at large. The indicator of accomplishment would be that this collaboration occurs with representative parent leaders to communicate school-related information to the community at large. The school building question, I think, is a great example. A lot of people in the community say, "Well, of course, the superintendent of schools wants to build a school." But when you've got members of the community who have children in our buildings who want to build a school, their voice, I believe, is heard in a different way with the community. And so, we want to engage and employ those people to work with us, to, to help get that done. And have a variety of voices talking about the mission and the vision and what we want to accomplish here in Abington. Another action item is to track graduates and use their success stories to promote success, the success of our schools. We have a very impressive group of young men and young women that go to the best colleges in the country and are doing amazing things, who are, who are our post-graduates. And it was the partnership that we created with our families, in our classrooms, and the work that was done in our classrooms by our teachers that got them there. And so, we want to promote that widely. So, the indicator of accomplishment would be graduates are tracked, and their success stories are widely promoted in newspapers, online, and public assemblies. Another actions item would be partner with community members, local businesses, and organizations on collaborative projects which benefit the community. For example, career days, fundraising for local causes, observance and recognition of national and state, local eventual occasions, and holidays. Avenue Pride Day, the 300th Celebration Memorial Day, and Veterans Day are just examples. Next strategic objective is to promote our students' awareness of their responsibility to participate in the community. Specific action step, provide and promote student service learning opportunities. An indicator of accomplishment would be student service learning opportunities are provided, and we generate and publish a list of programs which promote good citizenship. Those are things that our schools do and we want to continue to do. Provide intergenerational and multi-grade level character-building opportunities. An indicator of accomplishment would be intergenerational and multi-grade level character-building opportunities occur. For example, I think it's very powerful when our students from our high school go to the elementary school and talk about the life in our, in our high school or at our middle school with other students. It also gives our high school students the opportunities to be a role model. It's powerful when you're a role model in terms of the responsibility that you have. It promotes that cultural of, that culture of improving yourself as a role model, so I think it benefits our, our, the members of the upper classes, and I think it also benefits the students at the lower grades, because they see appropriate role models and they learn, you know, that it's okay to be a good school citizen, and that, you know, the popular kids aren't necessarily the mean kids. And unfortunately, on television today, the, the popular kids on, on shows are the mean kids, and that just promotes a culture of bullying and negativity that we want to stop. It also means working with our seniors in intergenerational projects, and the benefit of those relationships with our students, I think, for seniors and our students is something that's important. Another action step, recognize role models who exemplify community service and commitment at school events. Role models who exemplify a commitment to community service are recognized at school events. What that means is we want to use our school events to recognize those people that have done good work in our school buildings or for the community. The students that came here tonight, and recognizing their work the way that we did is an example of that. That, that promotes that, and I think it's important to communicate that to the community. And again, I think it, it helps to build a culture. The Avenue Education Association is here tonight to talk about Read Across America Day. That's another example, I think, of doing that, and our commitment to excellence in, in working collaboratively. Strategic objective, on the next page, to build strong community support for education through the approval of the annual budget and special budget request at the town meeting. Action steps include information on the needs of the schools, information on the needs of the schools is widely disseminated to all stakeholder groups. Indicator of accomplishment would be information on the needs of schools is widely disseminated using tools such as, and again, this is an updated list, using what's available to us today, and not necessarily letting go of some of the tried and true systems, but also including cable show emails, websites, and elements like that to, as a tool. And then, the final one is to promote attendance at town meeting. Town meeting is promoted through a variety of means, such as reminders about the date. Information about town meetings provided, and communication of town meeting dates with youth groups to coordinate family schedules. Just so that, it's, it's part of being in a democracy, just so that reminders about town meeting are available to people who go to people. Whether or not, regardless of the agenda, just to make sure that we're part of a town, we're part of the democratic process, and that we're involving as many people in, in the democracy as possible. So, we want to communicate that. People have any questions about that Strategic Action Plan?
Some questions? Comments? So, we're looking for a motion to, to that tonight?
I'm going to come back with a, yeah, and talk about it at the next meeting. Just wanted to present it tonight and answer any questions people might have.
Okay. Next is the Abington Education Association and Read Across America Day. Jessica Kinzman.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, sorry. I thought you were going to be at the computer.
Oh, no, that's what Stacy and Rose are performing. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to talk about Read Across America and the activities that the Abington Education Association has planned for it. So, basically, thanks. Can you all see? Read Across America is a program that has been sponsored by the National Education Association for the past 13 years, and it's celebrated annually. This year, it's being celebrated on March 2nd, which is actually Dr. Seuss's birthday in commemoration of all the work that he did for children's literature. And what it is, is a program that it calls on members of any given community to read to children, to promote literacy. And I, I decided to get the Abington Education Association involved in this, this year, because I came across some statistics that were put out by the Department of Education that I found pretty alarming about just how few children are actually read to on a daily basis outside of school. The numbers suggested that children between, between the ages of three and five, roughly 40-something percent of them are read to. And any study that you look at, regardless of who has done the study, clearly shows that children who are read to frequently do better in school. So, we came up with some activities that we are hoping will get the community's attention, and this is something we plan to commit to in years to come. So, first off, Steve, if you don't mind. The first thing that we're doing is we've created a YouTube video that is currently on our website. We're going to ask that it be sent out to parents and community members through constant contact within the next couple of days. And we're also going to be highlighting the other ways we are commemorating Read Across America Day. The video itself, it really just calls on parents of young children to reflect upon books that they read as a child. So, the whole video is just, it's set to the music from Reading Rainbow, which some of you may remember. And it's just book cover after book cover of things that we would have seen as children. And it pretty much ends with a public service announcement that Friday is Read Across America Day, and we would like people to engage in reading with children.
And it's great.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you.
I saw all sorts of kinds of stuff I used to read, and it was just great.
Yeah, I think, I think if you take the time to view it, you'll see a lot of things that are very familiar. The second thing that we have done is we have organized a field trip of high school students who on Friday will be visiting all the different elementary schools at various times, and working with our teachers who have selected reading materials. So, the students will be there to read and modeling, model reading to the younger kids, but they'll also be there to help out with any activities that the teacher needs them to fulfill during that time that they're there. And that addresses the younger kids, but we wanted to get the older kids involved as well. So, what we've done through the help of our building principals is we've organized pretty much a stop, drop, and read that's going to take place in the middle school and in the high school. It will begin with an announcement about Read Across America, probably a couple of quotes from Dr. Seuss books that the students will remember reading as children. And then, regardless of what class they're in, they're going to stop what they're doing and read for at least a 15-minute period before resuming their normal classroom activities. Let's see here. We've also invited some community members to come into classrooms and read, and if they can be there, which is kind of up in the air right now, but if they can be there, they'll be working with our high school students as well. All right. Some of you have probably, or all of you have probably seen the read posters. They were done by the Ohio Library Association a number of years ago. And they show celebrities, athletes, politicians, all different people who are posing with a book reading. And so, what we are doing is we have many, many teachers who have volunteered to pose with their favorite book, and we're going to replicate this campaign, and we'll be promoting, we'll be printing these out and posting. promoting, we'll be printing these out and posting them in all the various schools, just as a reminder to kids that Read Across America is only one day, but we should be promoting reading every day. So looking at pictures of your teachers with their favorite book will hopefully serve as a reminder that you should be reading for pleasure for at least fifteen minutes on your own every single day. And I do have to credit Sue Crowley, if she's here somewhere. She did the, the same thing several years ago in the high school, and we're, we're pretty much just stealing her ideas. So thank you, Susan. Moving on, the next thing that we're doing, I'm actually very, very excited about, we have teachers who have volunteered to create an audio file for our, our AEA website. What we've asked them to do is come up with either their favorite childhood book, or maybe a favorite book that they read to their child, and we are gonna have them record it, and we'll put it on our website. Because when parents are surveyed, they, the majority of them who admit to not getting a chance to read every night say it's because they're just overwhelmed. They're too busy, they're getting home from work, they're trying to get through just their regular day, and by the time, by the time there's time to read, it's time for their kids to be in bed. So we thought we could maybe alleviate that a little bit by creating, hopefully, thirty to forty books that will be available on our website. So if a parent feels that they just can't get to reading that night, if they have a computer, they can just click and they can listen to the voice of one of the teachers in the association reading a book to children before bed. That will not be up and running on Friday. We're hoping to have that up by March 15th, but again, we'll send out an email so that everybody is aware that it's happening. And then lastly, I'm also very excited about this. As of Friday, we are donating over $400 worth of books to each of the school libraries. They'll have a dedication in them to acknowledge that it is done in honor of Read Across America Day. Many of the books that are being distributed are award-winning books. We've broken, I've made a chart which will also be sent out as a reference point to any parents. It gives the appropriate reading level, any awards that it received, and reading level and the interest level. So those will be available as of Friday, and as soon as our librarians and support staff can get them checked in, students will be able to check them out and read them on their own. So, lastly, what I'd like to say is the National Education Association has a proclamation about Read Across America. I'd like to read it to you now. So what I'm going to be asking is that in partners in edu, as partners in education, that we sign it together, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. West as chairman and myself, and hang them in all the different buildings so that the students are aware of this. And it reads, "NEA's Read Across America Proclamation. Whereas the citizens of Abington, Massachusetts stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy, and whereas the Abington Education Association has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of youth, grounded in the principle that educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas NEA's Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's 108th birthday on March 2nd, 2012, sponsored by the NEA, promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students. Therefore, be it resolved that the AEA calls on the citizens of Abington to assure that every child is in a safe place reading together with a caring adult on March 2nd, 2012. And be it further resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses NEA's Read Across America and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world." So, thank you very much for your time. Now, just.
Can I comment?
Mr. Shannon, I'm sorry. Mr. Shannon just asked me to remind everybody that that video, if you want to see it now or tonight, is on our website, which is abington.mastteachor.org. Thank you.
Abington dot mass.
Teacher.
Dot org.
Thank you.
And if you haven't seen it yet, it's very easy. It's very web-friendly, so I just want to put it out there, because I've gone on it a few times already.
I just, I just want to say thank you very much, because, you know, this goes above and beyond, and it improves the life of our school buildings and thereby the lives of our children. There's nothing that's more significant in terms of learning, obviously, than reading, and so that, that you've taken this on as an additional project is, is wonderful and appreciated, so.
Comments on the board? It's good to have the students read. Read anything you can. Have your parents read to you when you're younger, and read magazines, books, whatever. Helps out immensely. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Jessica.
Dates to Remember: Thursday, March 1st, In-Service Early Release Day; Tuesday, March 6th, Green Wave Boosters Meeting at Abington High School at 7:00 p.m.; Tuesday, March 13th, Music Parents Meeting at Abington High School at 7:00 p.m.; Saturday, March 10th, Budget Meeting with Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen at 8:00 a.m. The St. Patrick's Day Parade will be held at 1:00 on Sunday, March 18th. That's always a very good time. Tuesday, March 27th, MASC Day on the Hill at 9:00 a.m. to 2:45 p.m. The lunch there at the State House is always excellent, so if anybody wants to, it is.
Highlight of the day.
It is.
And it's good to listen to, and have them listen to us.
If anybody else would like to attend besides Mr. Schaefer and myself, please let me know. Tuesday, March 27th, next regular school committee meeting at 7:00 p.m.
Mr. West? Could we add about Annie's next week?
Yes, that's right. Steve?
Yeah. We'd like to invite you all to the Abington High School production of Annie, which will be held on March 8th and 9th at the Frilio at 7:30 p.m., and Saturday, the 10th at 2:00 p.m., so all are welcome.
Okay. It's, it's posted down on the signboard down at the, the end of Colton's Way.
The other things that are going on, we, we, by the time this is aired on cable, it's only gonna confuse people, so we'll suffice it to say that the girls' basketball team is in the tournament, and we'll just say good luck because they're playing right now. By the time this is aired, that will have already taken place, so we don't want to jinx anybody, and I'd like to, I don't want anybody, if we could, not to jinx anybody about saying anything other than good luck to them. And then the boys' hockey team is, also has a tournament to birth, but we don't want to jinx them either. And to tell you about their schedule at this point, by the time this airs, would probably only serve to confuse people, so we'll just leave it at good luck.
Good. And report of the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, Dr. Thomas.
Great, thank you. Our first update is going to be on our Coordinated Program Review. I am thrilled to share that we received our draft report back, and we did very well. We, as you know, you've heard about the Coordinated Program Review, also known as CPR, for over a year, I've been updating you along the way. It's the accountability system that comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in a six-year cycle, and we were evaluated on special education, civil rights, and our ELL, English Language Learners. We do have the draft report back regarding special education compliance and civil rights compliance, and eighteen months from now, because the office that oversees, it's actually called the Office of English Language Acquisition and Academic Achievement, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is eighteen months behind, so we'll be receiving a report. With that, being eighteen months behind could work for us because they are revamping all of ELL curriculum assessments and procedures and policies, so they'll be going through a whole new assessment and a whole new curriculum that will be also linked to what we'll be talking about in terms of Common Core and ARC assessment and things of that sort that will be taking place in the upcoming years. So, the specifics, just so that you're aware, because we had fifty-nine special education compliance criteria areas, we only had two minor changes that need to be made. And in those specific areas, the first one was in the area of if a parent, or at an IEP meeting, if, if there is a person that was invited on the invitation list for the special education team, and the person's not there. For instance, we had a file that was reviewed, we had a teacher that had called in sick that morning, and there needs to be something documented in the file that the parent agrees that it is okay in writing that that person is not available to be there on that specific day. Once we researched that, it is common practice for us to do that, however, this person that was on the invite is not a person that does direct service and is not a person that had any reporting for an evaluation. So that is something that we do as common practice, but it was just one of those minor glitches that showed up in that particular file. The other piece is in the area of when a student is suspended for up to ten days and they're on an IEP, they want it documented that, you just don't write that the student will be suspended for ten days, they want the date. So, you know, ten days from now, say it's March, school days, March 12th, maybe, if you take away the weekends, they want the specific date added to the actual form. So it would say for a total of ten days until March, and then the date. So again, that's very minor, but that's something that we can make easy changes to on our corrective action forms. And then the last piece is something that we have not been doing on a regular basis, however, it's something that we will be doing, is that when we have students that drop out of school, ages sixteen or over, then we are obligated to annually send out letters stipulating that here are all the programs that we continue to offer you, and that if you're interested in continuing education, coming back to Abington High School, that our guidance department and our school would be able to work with you in terms of the type of programming that would help you in receiving your diploma. So that is something that we're going to be changing, and that comes under the civil rights area. So overall, I just want to say thank you. It's a tremendous amount of work. As you know, we have been inundated over the last few years with, you know, NIAAC accreditation at the preschool level, NEASC accreditation at the high school level, and then Coordinated Program Review, which is district-wide. It's a lot of work on top of everyone's busy schedules, but it's really exciting to know that it's worthwhile and that we are in compliance, and that the few, you know, changes that need to be made are small changes, and they're really in a paperwork component. So I just want to say a special thank you to all our teachers, especially the ones that were interviewed. We really did a lot of, of meetings and going over things, and, and it really went well. So our teachers and our administrators did a nice job, so I just want to say thank you. When the final report comes out, we will be making it public. That's one of the requirements, that it needs to go on the website, it needs to go in the local paper, that it's out, and it's always on the Department of Elementary and Secondary's website. So if any parent wants to go online and actually read about the fifty-nine areas, as well as the twenty-seven in civil rights, they're available to do so. Okay? So any questions on CPR, Coordinated Program Review?
I just have a quick question. When you did the review, did, were parents included? Did they get feedback? And how was that? Was it a survey-type thing, or?
It's both. They actually met with a member of the Special Ed PAC, and so they interviewed that person, that parent. And then they also send out random surveys to special education parents. They also put out, when I put out that the Coordinated Program Review will be conducted in the Abington Public Schools, if you have any questions, you know, please contact, and for us, it was Coretta, and so she did have parents in the Abington Public Schools that did contact her, and then basically gave feedback on their thoughts about.
And when you say put it out, you put it out in the newspaper?
Put it out, website, the newspaper, just public entities. And so then they're able to actually contact her while she's here on site. So she had the opportunity to meet with our special ed PAC members, as well as meet with and interview them formally, and then talk with people on the phone that had specific questions. And this all comes under the area of program quality assurance through the department. So if there's anything that there ever is a question, because of special ed, it's not always, people are not always happy, you know, there's good, there's bad, there's all of it, but it's all one team, so we're all working on it, and so there are different levels of compliance. But again, you know, we're fortunate here that we didn't have any negative compliance areas in the area of parental feedback. So, seems like all went well.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? All right, great. The next is, you had literature in terms of the Massachusetts NCLB waiver request. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask me any questions if you have it. Basically, where this is coming from is that, as you know, by the year 2014, we needed to make sure that all children were at the proficient level in the areas of English and math. The department's aware that that was not going to happen, and so many of the states asked and requested a waiver, and in that waiver, they really needed to document, you know, what is it that they were going to be requesting in terms of the waiver from now until it's up for reauthorization. And so you'll see in that first, number one basically spells it out for you, is that the law was passed in January 2002 with the main goal of helping all students reach proficiency in English Language Arts, reading, and math by the year 2014. And then if you skip to the second paragraph, however, the rising number of districts and schools judged inadequate under the NCLB, both in Massachusetts and across the nation, led the U.S. Department of Education in September 2011 to invite states to seek flexibility from specific requirements of NCLB. And then in exchange for this, from this flexibility, states must propose rigorous and comprehensive state-developed plans designed to improve educational outcomes for all students, close achievement gaps, increase equity, and improve the quality of instruction. So that's really the essence of, of the purpose of the waiver, and then it goes on to answer more specifically questions in terms of how long will it be in effect? And basically, that really goes until the reauthorization is up, and then that is actually up in the year 2014. So with that, you'll also see the whole big picture of education in Massachusetts is really going through an overhaul. You're seeing that now we have the Common Core that is changing our curriculum, and we're in the process of aligning that this year. And then coming from the Common Core is the PARK Assessment that will be taking the place of MCAS. That's not finalized, however, it's highly likely that that will come to fruition because our Commissioner of Ed is on the board and really behind the whole new PARK Assessment. And with the PARK Assessment, it's all going to be about the skills needed for college and career readiness. And with that, there's going to be a lot of time and energy and professional development that goes into the assessment, making sure that not only are we aligned, but it's also the type of assessment. There's going to be a lot more online testing that takes place versus the paper pencil testing that currently takes place. So there's a whole new shift, a whole new mindset with that. Also with that transformation that we're seeing and that we're going through, is you've heard me talking about the new supervision evaluation tool. We are a district that was not part of Race to the Top, so we actually have an additional year. So we have the rest of this year and all of next year to really form committee, a committee, and then to really pull apart the main purpose of supervision evaluation, work with our union leadership in terms of the collective bargaining, and then really look at the infrastructure we need to really stand true to the mandates of the new regulations. And with that is going to be time, it's going to be professional development, it's going to be infrastructure. So we're going to be coming back to you with proposals on what that perhaps looks like, and then really spelling out, and I would ask, if any of you want to be a part of that committee that we will be forming very soon, because we went this morning, the administrators, as well as Jessica and Steve, came to the Smart Goals training, is it's a major, major overhaul. So it is going to be a complete change from how we currently evaluate staff, from teachers, administrators, you name it, to a different model of how we're going to be evaluating them. And truly, to be honest, is under our current structure, we really see major gaps, that it is not going to be done to the fidelity without, if we don't have the extra infrastructure in place. Because there's so many people that need to be evaluated, and truly, there's a lot more in terms of in-classroom, unannounced, announced, that are all, you know, evaluation pieces that are all part of the regulations. And then it's really having those frequent meetings with teachers, so it's really a common collaboration, it's really a growth versus a one-time, I'm gonna evaluate you, go in for an hour, I'm gonna write, write it up, and then I'll see you again at the end of the year when I go to do your summative. This is really gonna be about, you're gonna see me regularly, we're going to, and this is at all levels, so principals with teachers, it's going to be central office with principals, and really looking at the growth model. But, you know, Peter attended this morning as well, as well as the principals and the union leadership, and so we're going to form a committee, probably put it out there so if anybody's interested, you know, we're going to be soliciting representation from all schools, and then people, you know, in different levels of the school. And then hoping to pilot on a smaller scale next year so that we can work out, you know, what's working, what's not working. There are gonna be kinks along the way, the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, they were very clear on that this morning, that they have early adopters that are going through this, and then they have districts that are in Level 5 and in Level 4 that have certain requirements that are already going through the evaluation process.
Level 5 and 4 means?
Level 5 and 4 is when you're through this and then they have districts that are in Level 5 and in Level 4 that have certain requirements that are already going through the evaluation process.
Level 5 and 4 means?
Level 5 and 4 is when you're deemed a district in need.
20% or more.
Right, when 20% or more of the school population is failing in terms of the requirements for MCAS, et cetera. So they're already, they don't have a choice, they've been going through it. So like your bigger places, like your bigger cities, you know, she was talking, like Springfield's gone through, Lowell's gone through, we have early adopters around here that I've already talked to you about. In Whitman Hansen, they're going through, just piloting and seeing what's working. And when I do speak with my colleagues over there, it's always the reoccurring, we need capacity building and we need time. Because we, I think that nobody will argue with the shift because it is really about quality and time for teachers and administrators to really work together, but our job is always the race against time. And so it's really looking at the kind of infrastructures that we have in place to focus on curriculum and instruction and assessment and then also working on so that principals are doing more of the focus on supervision and evaluation, but also having other tiers under there to also look at who else is also part of that piece of supervision evaluation. So that is something that we're going to be working on with the union leadership. We don't know what that looks like, but that is something that's going to be, you know, coming forth and that is going to require, you know, time, professional development, money, all of it. But this is state mandate and so that is going to be something that we need to look at. And again, we are going to be up to make sure that this is all implemented in September of 2013, right? Not this September, but the following September, 2013. And then the PARC assessment is, they're anticipating that that should be up in full implementation. They're piloting it right now in different districts, but that they're hoping that it will be online and up for all districts in the 14, 15 school year. So major, major changes. It's similar for those of you, you know, it's funny, I was having one of those moments this morning that I was realizing that I'm getting old because I lived through 1993 when education reform came in and it was a massive. And then everyone said, oh, you know, it comes, if you're here long enough, it comes around, it comes around. Well, now I'm here long enough and now this is really just like 1993 with new curriculum, new assessment, looking at evaluations. And so we really need to look at the capacity and the infrastructure that we have in place to really put quality work into that.
If you remember your organization, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, earlier in the year, one of their, a couple of their referendum items at the annual meeting included building capacity around these changes that were coming. Jim went to that meeting down in the Cape and so, you know, all of us in Massachusetts are looking at this transformation and how we're going to best retool, build capacity to do this the right way. Because the data teams that are required that haven't been in place before, the data analysis, the evaluation tool that we're going to be using, which is brand-new, a brand-new curriculum, and then a brand-new way to assess that with the PARC assessment, there isn't much left to change. I mean, that's, that's just about everything.
Yeah, remembering that teaching and learning is the heart and soul of education. So I really would suggest that when we put the, you don't know it unless you live it. And so since you are part of the school committee, you know, if any of you want to really come and be a part of the team, it's overwhelming. And it's coming and it's coming, you know, in a year and a half and we need to have everything up and ready and running by September 13. And so I think that with the collaboration with all of us and with our union leadership, this is really a wonderful time in education to make some significant changes. So just give me an email if you'd like to.
Maybe for people at home, can you explain PARC again, what the acronym stands for?
Sure. It's the Partnership and Assessment of College and Career Readiness. So basically, we have a lot of work to do in this area. We do have Common Core, but there's a Mass Core recommendation. So the wording can be sometimes tricky, is that with regulations, you need to know like what's a recommendation versus a regulation. Regulations are not up for discussion. It's policy, it's what you're doing and you don't fight it, don't argue it because it's the regulation.
You change the regulation to make a change.
Right. And a recommendation is what department, what the department would recommend that you do as a district. But they can't always tell you what to do because they're, they don't have the money to give you in order to get it all done. However, what they're saying is everyone in Massachusetts needs to be here at this date. We don't care how you get there, but you need to get there. And so with the PARC assessment is, you know, we really need to look at our high school in terms of what we're doing for our course requirements and are we giving our children in high school and all the way down, but primarily the Mass Core is the recommendation in terms of are kids leaving our high school with career readiness skills or college readiness skills to be successful? And so that will look at, are you giving them foreign languages? Are you giving them business? Are you giving them technology? What are the 21st century global skills that you're looking at? And so that's an area that our high school does a great job of trying to embed, 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 but we're still trying to build back from when we dismantled. And so as we're building back, we really need to look at, okay, what are those recommendations and where is it? And it happens at all levels because we know that all our feeder schools go into the high school, but we need to make sure that, again, the requirement will be that children have to pass the PARC assessment in order to graduate. So are we giving them the skills to graduate and then are we giving them the skills to be productive in careers or in college/university life? So you're going to hear me talking about this for years and I know I'm throwing a lot at you and, you know, I'm glad that, but if you ever want to meet for me to really go through it wholeheartedly, you know, I'd be happy to do that. Any other questions? And I linked the whole teacher, the new teacher evaluation till Tuesday. I've just given you a little update on Section C, but you're going to be hearing more in terms of our process and then next steps. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you. Let me give you a little bit of an update on where Abington is on homeless transportation. There's been much in the news recently about State Auditor Suzanne Bump's report regarding homeless transportation. There's a federal act called the McKinley-Vinto Act and that provides students who are in temporary housing the ability to remain in their school of their home district or their community of origin. And then it's the responsibility, a shared responsibility between the town or city where the temporary housing is and the community of origin to share transportation costs for those students to come back to the school where they were prior to receiving the temporary transportation. Here in Abington, over the past two years, we've actually had students in temporary housing in such communities as Rockland, Brockton, New Bedford, Fall River, Boston, Plymouth, and Middleborough. We have had, over the past two years, approximately eight students at different times or for extended periods of times in temporary housing. The State Auditor has determined that under what's called the State Local Mandate Law, that it has imposed a new cost on a city or town and that it must either be fully funded by the state or subject to local acceptance or in which case you would then appropriate funds for it. So all these, all the communities in Massachusetts that have students and are paying for homeless transportation, the State Auditor has determined that it's an unfunded mandate and therefore should be paid for by the state. So we were asked about a, two or three months ago to provide to her office our homeless transportation information and which helped determine that this year was about $11.3 million in the state of Massachusetts spent on transporting students in temporary housing. In Abington, during the 2011 fiscal year, which was last year, we spent $27,440 transporting students from temporary housing back to Abington and that's a cost share, don't forget. We're sharing that cost, that burden with the community in which they're being housed. And in this fall, I was asked to estimate a cost for the, for this year and that was estimated to be over $40,000 at the time for this year. So in the governor's budget, he has included funding for homeless transportation, reimbursement for homeless transportation. I'm not sure where that's going to end up through the state budget process, but I wanted to give you that update as to where we are. And I'll also say that I work very closely with Dr. Thomas's office in terms of, you know, determining homeless, determining, we also talk to families about whether transporting them back to the, from temporary housing to Abington is the best thing for the community, I mean, not for the community, for them, or should they be going to school in their local community? And so it's, it is a, it is a conversation that we're having.
You know, the days where schools were responsible for the six hours, six and a half hours that children were with them ended decades ago. We take on the responsibility, our faculty, our staff, our administrators take on the responsibility of the 24-hour life of a child. And I think that's because we're the only agency in our society that has any hope of getting any of these things done. But it's just another, it's another thing, not that this is a bad thing and all the things that we're asked to do, but it's just another thing that we've, that schools in America have been asked to do. Even though we have them for six and a half hours, we're responsible for the 24-hour life of a child. So that's, that's just the way that is right now.
And there are procedures in place, like we have to make sure that we follow all the procedures with the McKinley-Vinto Act. And then there's written documentation that the parent has stated that they are currently homeless and then we track them because how long are you currently homeless? And then we have conversations back and forth with our offices and then with also the Department of Ed, because if we have a student that's over a year, over a year and a half, you know, then you have the conversations about are you homeless or are they on track for housing? And then the department, we send a dispute for the department to then make a decision on, you know, they're able to track where this person is living and then look at, and especially for, you know, situations where, you know, because we have some really far away placements. And so, you know, that's a lot of money for a small town like Abington for transportation just for, just to get them to school. And so, you know, it's really having that larger philosophical conversation, but then having the Department of Ed really tracking that as well and helping us with that.
Alicia, how would we transport a displaced student that's in, I think you said Fall River?
Fall River.
How does that student get across?
We contract, so depending, we're in communication with the community that they're temporarily housed in to first see if there's any students that are coming from that community up this way. And if not, then.
That could share a ride.
That could share a ride. Of course, we run into school times and we even have siblings that we're transporting separately because the school times are very different. And then we have a competitive bidding process that we contact our special education transportation providers and find out, you know, who can, who can provide that, which I have to say is becoming increasingly difficult for a transportation company to go to a community far away, an hour away, when it really is temporary. We don't know if they're going to be there for a week, a month, six months, or a year. So they're making a commitment and we can't commit back to them for time.
So it's not very appealing to them business-wise?
Right. Correct. Oftentimes. And we have, we have a really good relationship with six special education vendors and they'll, I mean, I have not, not been able to provide a ride to somebody. But sometimes it's, they have to hire somebody new, we have to have them query. In the olden days, you could have a cab to bring a student to school. But today with the query laws, criminal records, we wouldn't put a student in a, in a vehicle with someone who hasn't gone through our background checks.
And do we see this across the district? Is it our younger students, our older students?
Across the district.
I understand money. How many students are you talking per year would you say?
Last, I have that, last year was four, this year's three.
That's a lot of money for a student.
Correct.
So our share last year for the four students was $27,440.
Right. And that's a cost share.
Yeah, that's half of what it costs.
So double that and then one district pays one, that half a half, and then we pay a half.
Those can be, you know, $200 a day rides, $250. And, and I think it's important to say that philosophically, keeping a student in the place that they're, that they've been at when they're going to be in a temporary housing environment and could be in five different communities in the course of two months and go into five different schools. So you're also, you're really balancing, I mean, the act itself is noble. It's the fiscal difficulties that it produces for cities and towns.
Nobody would say that this is a bad thing for the child that needs the service. However, who bears the burden of the cost is where I think it's unfairly put on the schools.
Yep.
Are there any other questions?
And last but not least, the Woodsdale Windows.
No, I have one more. I had, I had a fiscal review as part of the coordinated program review and the, there's a piece about that in your packet. I just wanted to kind of review their findings. So we had a fiscal audit of fiscal policy, not of practices, practices and policy, not, we have an audit done on our financial records every year, but this was done on policy. The gentleman came in from the Department of Education, I can tell you that he was very impressed with the operations of the business office, had a few recommendations for us. Number of them were already in place actually prior to him coming, but shortly prior to him coming. So the first recommendation based on his visit was to expand the written internal policies and procedures specific to our operation in the business office. And I would tell you that, again, very impressed with the operation itself, but that we didn't have everything documented in a written policy and procedure. So that is something that, that I am undertaking at this time. The second was to bond all employees who handle money. And this is something that I'm working with Town Hall to complete this recommendation, actually at, in Town Hall, they're also working to bond all employees that handle money. The next two of their recommendations, we've actually already put in place and that has to do with federal funding of employees and the employee acknowledge or signing off that they have performed their responsibilities according to the goals and objectives of the grants that were written. And so those, as I said, were already in place prior to, prior to his visit. And the third, and the final one is, is a bit of an undertaking that I'm working with the Town Treasurer and the building principals and that is, and I'll be coming back to the committee in a, in a subsequent meeting, around student activity accounts. And those are the, the student accounts that, such as class, junior class, freshman class. And bringing, right now, we have a very elaborate set of policies and procedures at the school level around those funds and the auditing of those funds at the school level. And what's going to happen is those are going to be brought to the, into the towns, into the school departments in the towns side and the money will come and be held and come from the schools, from the school and town side as opposed to being held at, at the schools, well, in the bank according to the school. So that's something, again, that I'm working with the Town, it takes quite a bit of, of kind of back work with the, with the Town Treasurer to set those accounts up. And, and those have nothing, that's really, has, has everything to do with, with procedure, policy and procedure and not that there's any problems with those accounts.
Questions on that?
And the final is Woodsdale Windows. I'm not sure how many more meetings I'm going to report on the Woodsdale Windows, but there'll be a few more. I'm happy to report that we're substantially complete with the window project. We have two kind of outstanding items that anyone who walked into the Woodsdale at this time would know about. One is the cafeteria wall, exterior wall, curtain wall, that has had to be somewhat refabricated. So we are, we had a big meeting on that last week that we're looking at about three to four weeks for that to be completed. And the second is the shape.
Which means they did the job, weren't satisfied with the job.
We were not satisfied with the job.
And so we're going back and making them do it again.
Correct, thank you. We were not happy with, with how it came out and literally they are redoing the exterior of that wall, which didn't make them very happy. of that wall, which didn't make them very happy. And they keep reminding us how much money we saved them in their bid price, and we say, that's great, that's what you bid, and this is the work that we expect to have done. And, and they are, with some pushing, they are refabricating the entire exterior. And the second is the shades, and the shades were supposed to be installed over February vacation. There's really one provider of those shades, they're the same company that did the shades at Abington High School and at Beaver Brook, which we've been very happy with the quality and, and the materials. Unfortunately, there's one company that does them, there's about 80 window projects going on in the state right now, and he has delayed our installation of the shades. There are, there are, the old shades are up on the windows now, so there's, there is something there. But we hope to have those completed also by the end of March. So I'm hoping by the March school committee meeting, I can tell you that, that we're done. But, and, and I know Peter's alluded to this in the, in the past, too, we are sticklers on the punch list. So I'm actually fine with not being completed on the punch list. I walked around last week with the, both the architect and our owner's project manager, and we came up with the 11-page punch list of thing, of items, whether it be a screws loose here, or, you know, something's not done here, and we continually are going back after that punch list, and Lockheed Window Corp. will, will be here until the punch list is completed, and we're happy with everything.
You can be a hero and say the job was done early.
Right.
But you won't be a hero with quality. And it's better to have the job done right.
Yep. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Felicia.
Thank you.
Mr. Schaper?
The next item we don't need, in terms of the MSBA item, in terms of the statements of interest, we can pass over that. Matt's already presented. Did you want to do, I have a couple of items under informational, do you want to cover those down and then go back to?
Can I ask a quick question before we go into that? Do we have any update on the MSBA process itself, as far as have we submitted the committee conference call, anything, like just status update?
Sure. We have, we have not submitted the committee membership. I know that we, we have that, we are, I believe, awaiting some biographical information on some of the members, so, because you have to say what position they would hold within that. The initial compliance certificate, which was that first item that needed to be completed, that's actually going to be sent out tomorrow with some other signed items. And then we wait for town meeting, and then we have a number of other items that will need to be completed by August 7th, including maintenance and enrollment data.
Okay, I was just wondering, so it looks like nothing else will happen until, so I was wondering if we could even get, if anything, you know, a weekly email update or something, because like I said earlier, we were going to be fielding questions, if we had the current, you know, just if anything transpires.
Sure, absolutely.
That we need to know about.
Yep.
Thank you.
Felicia, how many people ended up on the committee with, besides the specific people we needed, and then there were general volunteers?
We have, we, well, the school committee never said, never set a ceiling for the number. What a selectman asked that it be no bigger than 19, so we're looking for between 12 and 19. We've got that. What we're, what we have to accomplish is, MSBA has required backgrounds for certain people, so we have to match, for example, they want to make sure that somebody who represents the community is an engineer, an architect, and so not only do we have to have certain appointed people from the Board of Selectmen, from the Town Hall, people, other, other positions, but we also have to have people with a certain background. So we've got the people that we need, what's left to do is get them approved by the state, because they've got to approve the list. So, did I answer the question?
Yep.
So just under informational, and then Jim, do you want to go back to the business establishing?
Sure.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of things under informational to you, and certainly take any questions that you might have. The first item is the correspondence on the 180-day waiver for Abington High School. If you remember, I wrote a letter to the Commissioner requesting that, as a result of the difficulty we had at Abington High School on January 17th with the broken water pipe, we'd be given a waiver and not have to repeat that day for that school, because all other schools were in session, and in the past, historically, that has happened for Abington. The Commissioner has denied that and required that we have that day for Abington High School. So what you have in your packet is another letter that I've written, and there are enclosures that I sent to the Commissioner that, that you don't have in your packet, but I can describe them to you if you'd like. Basically, this waiver, I, I gave a higher level of detail. In the past, a higher, a level of detail like this wasn't required for a waiver. Historically, you write a letter describing the circumstance, and you're, and schools were given a waiver. So because we were denied, and if we actually had to make up this day, I felt it was important for the Commissioner to know the actual breakdown of cost. So included in this request of the Commissioner was a breakdown of cost. We have itinerant staff that have to travel from building to building. They were in that day, the day the water pipe broke, so they would need to be paid for another day to come in if there's an additional day for the high school, and that would cost us, and, and the cost of transportation, it would cost us an additional $5,179. So I wanted to make sure that if, which wasn't budgeted for. So I want to make sure that if the Commissioner was going to make us do the makeup day, he knew that there was a cost at Abington that wasn't budgeted for. Also, I gave in, in my letter to the Commissioner, a history of occurrences back in 2000 and in 2001, when similar circumstances occurred in buildings in Abington, where it was just that building, a loss of power, or another item like that, which made that one day a loss for that building. But that also, we are in session, the total number of days needed in terms of the requirement. At Abington High School, even if we don't have the day, we will still have 990 hours of education for the students at Abington High School. We will just make it by about five or six hours, but we don't need to have another day to meet the 180 requirement. There are two requirements for our high school. One is 990 hours, and the other one's 180 days. In order to pass on the 180 days and have 179 days, the Commissioner has to bless that. And so this is another letter requesting one more time that he grants that waiver. If not, it'll cost us, the number I gave you, $500, $179. We'll have to ask our high school teachers who didn't come in when the pipe broke to come in, and then pay the people that did come in the additional days' pay, and then run the buses that day for our high school students. And I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't know, I'll leave it there, in terms of the day that those students will have.
My son already said, you're not going to make me go that day, are you?
So, any questions about that? The next item I have for you is just a thank you note to Jeff Deal. Earlier, Felicia talked about the McKinney-Vento Act and transportation. I've included in your packet a movement by Jeff, who's one of our, who's a state representative representing Abington, and other, other representatives requesting the state provide some relief to schools around the homeless transportation. And so I just wanted to include that in your packet, that information about what he's done advocating for schools, and then just a thank you note to him for that. You've got in your packet the request to the Board of Selectmen for consideration of the debt exclusion, and the other, there are two other items I wanted to mention to you. You know, a very significant one is, is one here, the correspondence from John Mahoney, our Director of Art in the Avenue Public Schools, just tremendously successful with our students in, in terms of their achievements and in the 62nd Boston Globe Scholastic Art Awards Program. And at, at the risk of butchering some names, I want to recognize some students, I'd rather, I'd rather mispronounce their names than not pronounce their names. So I'll do the best that I can with it, but just the work, not only John Mahoney does, but the other teachers that, throughout the Avenue Public Schools, that get them to that high school level, in terms of the quality of work that they do in art, is really substantial and impressive. And so winners from Abington High School are Rachel Clark for painting, received an honorable mention, Christina DiAgostino for sculpting, a gold key, Molly DeQuizno for sculpting, a gold key, Jonathan Doucette, painting, gold key, Alexandra Draper, sculpture, a gold key, Emily Fagan, photography, a silver key, Jasmine Guevain, digital art, for an honorable mention, she also received digital art, a silver key, and for art portfolio, Jasmine received a gold key, Elizabeth Gould, photography, honorable mention, Amy Hackett, painting, a gold key, Julianne Johnson, sculpture, an honorable mention, William Panzio, Panzino, sculpting, honorable mention, William also received another honor mention for sculpture, Joseph Pham, or Fain, I apologize, Joseph, photography, a silver key, also received a gold key for painting, Sarah Spencer, photography, a gold key, Sarah also received a gold key for digital art, Jared Torquetti, sculpture, a silver key, Jared also received another silver key for sculpture, and then a gold key for sculpture, Brendan Whalen, painting, received a gold key, Froyle Middle School students, Evan Goyek, mixed media, silver key, Ashlyn Hayes, mixed media, honorable mention, Elizabeth Jarns, drawing, honorable mention, Taylor Johnson, drawing, honorable mention, and Abby Rickerson, mixed media, silver key. So I just really, to John, the Art Department, and all of these students, want to recognize them for all of the work. I have, since I've been at Abington, I have never read a list this long. This is a record breaker, so.
Can I just add something? The gold and silver key winning art award works are on display at the State House Building in Boston through April 20th. An award ceremony will be held on March 11th, 2012, at the John Hancock Hall. The gold key winning artwork and portfolios will be judged again in New York for additional honors with other work from around the country in the National Scholastic Art Awards this spring. So for someone who can only draw stick figures, this is great.
The next piece here, under informational items, I just want to answer any questions that you might have. You don't have an item in the packet, and I'll explain why. And it's symbolic of a larger issuing problem with data and what we're required to do in towns around data. Our dropout rate, our dropout rate for our school system generally hovers at about 2%. Actually, the newspaper called the other week and asked if I would comment on why our dropout rate is so low in Abington compared to other places. Not that any dropout rate is ever acceptable, it isn't. But they were looking to get some information on, on why ours is generally low. At the same time, the state was ready to publish that our dropout rate was 4.8%, which isn't accurate. In the end, it was published at 2.2%, when in actuality, we believe it's 1.8%. So I highlight this to you because what was reported, and that's why I didn't include anything in your packet on it, because I don't have faith in, in the information that we have available to us. And the problem is simply that there are students from time to time that are double counted. In other words, we know they went to another system, we know they've graduated from that system, and yet the state will count them. And not pointing the finger at the state, or the movement of data back and forth, the amount of data that moves back and forth between school systems and the state is a mountain. And I wanted to highlight this to you, just in case, it did come up and the number was published, and, you know, people at least knew, or at least had the heads up on it, and speak about it publicly for a moment, because it's illustrative of that mountain of data that moves back and forth between the state and all school systems, and the importance of that data. Our funding is based on the movement of that data. We had a situation where students were registered out of district, and the number was wrong, and it, it meant a swing of, how many dollars?
$95,000.
$95,000 for the Avenue Public Schools. We found it, we corrected it. But this move with data in the future around student assessments, the evaluation tool that we're using for teachers and staff, reporting out proficiency of our students, decisions that we're going to make about purchases, or what programs we're going to run, are based on data, and how good the data is, and how much faith, you know, we need to have in, in our data is important. So there's a bigger issue with data, nothing we're going to solve tonight. The purpose of leaving this on the agenda, although I didn't have the accurate report from the state yet, was to just talk about that for a moment, just in case that was something that does come up. And it's something that we need to be ever vigilant and watchful of in terms of our accuracy of, of data, because it's important. So, do people have questions about it, though?
That's some very good news to report, that the dropout rate is low.
Generally, ours is lower than in other communities, and, and, you know, well, the interesting part of it was, I didn't want to do an article on it, because for all I knew, the next day, the state was going to inaccurately report that ours was higher, and I'd be telling them why we're so wonderful. So I was, I was afraid that there would be a disconnect there, so.
Okay, new business and establishing of next school committee meeting dates, March 10th, 2012, at 8:00 a.m., Business and Finance Subcommittee meeting, March 27th, 2012, at Town Hall, at 7:00 p.m. An approval of accounts, need a motion to approve all accounts as presented or amended?
We have a motion.
Motion by Jeanette, seconded by Ellen, all of the same.
Nice.
And then we do have executive session tonight?
I do have an executive session.
Okay, need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategies with the Avenue Education Association, and not to return to public session by roll call vote. Going? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes?
Good night.
Thank you all for attending. Thank you all for attending.